Is there a motion for the minutes?
I make a motion except the minutes, it's on July 10th, did you?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have two hearings continued from last month. The first one is from a request, a notice of intent request from John Prairie. He was to revise plans to meet new fire department regulations for the 200-foot length. And this property is located at Maple Swamp Road.
For the record, to this whole, all of us here, representing John Prairie, as we know, last July, we were here showing an hour twenty-foot wide driveway where they turn around out back for fire apparatus. Everything else pretty much-
Wronged out today, it's a federal regulation.
Yeah, NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, it is, actually. Was it 150, Charlie? I think it's 150 feet, right, it's what the regulation states, so... So they, John Prairie and his son, who are going side by side, both agree, so we're here tonight just with the amended plan.
Okay, is your lawyer here?
Straight up and turns into his garage, he bangs it right into his garage or he can go straight, so you got a three-point turnaround back there.
Yeah, okay, um, let's see. Okay, this is 50-foot round. This is the 100-foot here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so the part of the house is in the buffer zone?
Correct, yep. Beach field's not, the well is.
Okay, we're at Rockwall, okay. Reserve area, okay. I'm just looking for the locust here, Maple Swamp, you know, it's a...
It's a, if you, you know, the bowl fills out.
Yeah.
Probably, um, ah, may, I would say 300 feet to 500 feet to the east.
Okay.
So it's an area, actually, it's an area with no, interesting, has no power. So from Oak to the fields, there's no electricity through there. So these guys are gonna get poles in over there to power itself.
Are there any, uh-
So it's that stretch from Oak to, Oak to the fields is what we're talking about, that whole plat, that's down the opposite side of the street.
Any questions or any comments, Jack?
No, no, I guess, just don't have the turnaround and stuff, you know?
No? Okay, so you have still a motion?
Well, I make a motion, we accept it, and oppose the AMR.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're good. Okay, you'll be getting, within three weeks, your, um, headwork? Now, okay, Charlie, you got the revised plan?
The order goes, Charlie, the order of conditions. He was asking me, can he start in the appeal period if he wants to at his own risk? The appeal period with the order of conditions, once you issue an order of conditions, um-
Because 39 days to issue.
Right.
Yeah.
But then after that, there's an appeal period too.
Within 10 days, yeah.
Yeah, but he can start in that period-
If he want to appeal it?
At his own risk.
And you can do that to him?
He didn't want to stop during the appeal period.
Oh, no, you better not start until he gets the order of conditions.
The order of conditions recorded, right, obviously, but then after that, in the appeal period-
Well, he's a good guy.
Okay.
Okay, next is a continuation for a notice of intent from David Prairie to construct a single-family dwelling driveway and associate it creative within the delineated vegetated wetland.
Similar discussion last month, we were turning around here. As you come in, he's got this U-horse, U-turn into the garage, and then he's backing out into, over here. So, here, and then a three-point turn to get out. We just did this one, this is Dad, this is his son.
Okay. Are these lots side by side, or?
We just did this lot here, so this lot is actually behind that lot.
Now, um-
Yep, two driveways side by side.
Okay, now, frontage on this lawn, is that over there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, because I know there's, there's some kind of, you can have a step back, but you gotta have so many acres, or-
Right, this, this is not a retreat lot, or a flag lot, because it's got frontage on the other side of that lot.
Okay, you got it over here.
This lot actually has, um, this is the recreation zone. This is the recreation zone, and this is not, so technically, through here, you know, there should be no tree cut, and so he's got his filament going through here, and his clearing areas right through here. I think they're trying to change that with the selectum, because it sort of, it doesn't make sense why it's recreational and way out in the woods like that, why he didn't go to Maple Swamp, it's beyond me, but that's how it shows on the zoning maps. So, we're keeping all our work in the residential district, not the, the, um, the recreation zone.
Any questions? Jack?
No.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve and issue our conditions?
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to keep these, like, driving around?
That'll hold all of that.
One is enough.
One, all you want is one?
Maybe one for the, one of each, each block.
This is John, and this is, uh-
Yeah, the way you got it is, Charlie, put this one over there, was it?
David. No, that's David.
This is David?
Yeah.
Okay, on the new hearings, we have a notice of intent request from Edward Santos Jr. to construct an addition to a single-family dwelling within 100 feet of a delineated vegetated wetland within Lot 32, associated with Matt 12, and to repair or replace a failed septic system.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, for the housekeeping items, I believe. My name is Wayne Santos. I'm an engineer with, inside engineering. I'm also the homeowner for the site, so...
Thank you.
And, about a notification?
Thank you again.
Okay.
Okay, the Gazette payment is there as well? Okay?
Uh, would you like another fan in front of you, or?
Yeah, if we could have one.
Or would you rather just have that one on the table, whatever?
Well, maybe a little closer.
If we got one now, well, no, you can leave that one now, we'll just-
A little focal.
And I just want-
I just want-
Okay.
Um, before you, we're filing a notice of intent to, to work within the 100-foot buffer. The reason being is we're replacing and upgrading our septic system, which has failed, and would also, at the same time, would like to put an addition on the rear of the house. The blue line that's shown on here is the 100-foot buffer, and we are able to actually move the septic system outside of the 100-foot. The septic tank will be just where it exists now, and the addition will come right off the back of the house. The yellow line is the 50-foot buffer. It's not yellow here, it's this yellow, this 50 here. That's the 50-foot line. Work within the 50-foot, the 25 to 50, would be grading, and we'd also need to remove, there's a cherry tree that's seen better days, that needs to come down. We're basically gonna mimic the, coming up with the foundation, and you're gonna walk out off the back.
Okay, um, on Williams, where is this on Williams?
Are you familiar with the Rougeaux's?
Yeah, Rougeaux's, yeah, right across from the Rougeaux's farm.
Oh, okay, all right.
The septic had failed, they moved it outside of the buffer zone.
Yeah.
So not a problem there.
Yeah.
And there should be no problem with the house location.
Well, the house is already there, it's just that they're gonna have an addition.
Correct.
Okay, when they do work, on, you're gonna have a basement there?
Yes, it's a walkout, now, we'll be mimicking the same exact thing.
Okay, you mean you gotta walk out here?
Yes.
So you're gonna have, you're gonna do a walkout here?
Yes.
Okay, and where your protective barrier is going to be for, um-
The protective barrier, I'm showing-
Because we have a no-touch zone.
This dash line here, we're proposing the erosion control, which would be on the straw wall.
Actually, I'd much rather see it further, closer to the house, and that way it's going to, uh, keep your equipment out of the 50-foot buffer zone. If you put something here, rather than here, you're gonna get additional protection, because right now, you're, this, by working in this area and digging it up, you're going to have problems with siltation, and it's gonna flow into the buffer zone. And whereas, if you have it here, it's going to protect the buffer zone, and certainly be super protective of the actual wetland itself.
Yeah, we, we need to actually grade beyond, and so if we were to put it on the 50, we actually need to grade, because of the septic tank, we need to raise everything about three feet to comply with the new regulations. And then, in order to, once we fail over it, we need to grade down into the existing grade. So, we would actually-
But, Charlie, what do we have, is it no-touch zone, is it 25 or 50 feet?
It's 25 feet, but the yard is, it's an established lawn.
Yeah, no, no, I just, okay.
It is lawn, all the way to the edge of the wetland.
The buffer zone, the 50-foot buffer is just to keep a house out of it, but it doesn't say anything about-
Yeah, okay, no, that's-
Working.
Okay.
Uh, we can easily move it up in that area, you know, say 20, 25 feet, 20, 25?
Yeah, I, I would feel more comfortable with that, because that would protect, uh, the area rather than having equipment inadvertently run over whatever's there, and, you know, how things happen. And if you have the line there, that's gonna be a visual as well as additional protection for that 25, no, 25-foot no-touch zone.
What are your proposals?
Moving the-
Proposal to move it to the 25?
Erosion control to the 25-foot no-touch zone.
Accomplishes the same thing, yeah.
Actually, and it would make sure no equipment gets in there.
No problem.
It just makes it harder for Ed to mow the lawn, but, that's fine.
Well, that's, I mean, how long is it, it's not gonna take you all, all year to do, put the, uh-
Let's move on.
Okay, so this is all lawn here then, you said?
Yeah.
So difference in elevation a foot?
So, so what's, lawn goes right down to the wetlands?
It, it, uh, it's probably about, it ranges from six to 10 feet off of it. The original homeowners had gardens all through that area, have rhododendrons that are a good 30 years old down there, so...
Okay, I'll let you guys, uh-
You don't have a, a final, correct?
No, I haven't.
They haven't issued one yet.
No.
So, we can't close the hearing tonight anyway. But moving the, uh, silt fence up wouldn't be a problem, for me, anyway.
It would, you know, it would encompass the garden and all that stuff, but, you know-
To where garden?
Well, it would go near the garden.
I, I think if we loop it around, touch the garden, come up the other side of the garden, I think we would get, we would get the intent of it.
You're not gonna do the work anywhere in here, anyway, you're not, you're not even gonna come close.
No, but, I, the reason I did extend it down that way, if they may use the lower gravel driveway to get into the back of the lot, so...
Okay, so, so you can see that without them going-
Yeah.
That would prevent them from going too far into the area.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. You guys have any questions?
No.
Yeah, we can't close the hearing.
No, no, I know, but I'm gonna ask for public input. Oh, okay.
No public input.
Um, well, um, okay, any, we're here a motion, then to continue.
Motion to continue to the September meeting?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you gotta get a file number, and, so we can continue.
Is there a way the commission could close the public hearing once you get the file number, without a public hearing? Because I think you can do that.
No, we never have.
If this never-
She wants to close the hearing without a public meeting, we have to, we, has to be, I think has to be done-
You could, you could, yeah.
Did you check your emails for that, because I just came back with the email?
Oh, I did?
Yeah, it went out, I didn't know.
Well, if you could give me a second, if I-
We checked. We checked it early this morning, but came this afternoon, for us.
This may be a new addition. No, I don't see it here. Can we just check work? I sent it there. No, it didn't come in.
Well, you've agreed to move the silt fence up?
Yes.
You don't even have to attend the hearing next week, we'll close it and issue an order of conditions.
Okay, well, we're just looking to move forward with the septic system, or it was in such dire need. But that's okay, we can baby it a little longer, so...
Look, because I don't think that we can close it, uh-
Without the, yeah.
It has to be a public meeting, a public hearing. Um, now, you're outside of the buffer zone here.
Hmm, but the tank isn't.
The tank, the tank, or-
Yeah, no, the tank is here.
Yeah, the tank isn't. Okay, so, to the, what, September 13th, is that, 11?
September 11th.
Second Wednesday, okay.
Okay, uh, let's see if we can have that continuing motion again, then to September.
Motion to continue to September meeting, September 11th?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You want, uh, one of these, Charlie?
No, these are all good, that's not everybody. They're on top, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Which one of you, the street guys, made the motion to close, I mean, to continue?
Continue, second, good. I didn't, I didn't, wasn't sure if there was a vote on it the first time, that's why I have it on the second time.
We won't stand it.
Okay, uh, we have a notice of intent request from Anton Roderick's to reconstruct a garage to an existing structure on 2117 Williams Street, and replace the previous outdated septic system with a new Title V.
Hi, Lisa Caladonia, LSC.
Is this lady?
How you doing?
Yes, as soon as you said, I, I didn't recognize you over there, but when you said you-
When I smile. Um, so, I'm here to represent Anton Roderick. Uh, he's under enforcement for this property, I'm sure you guys know it pretty good.
He's good.
Okay, um, before we get to-
Okay, do you have the, any cards, and you have the Gazette payment?
I have all of them.
Okay.
Thanks.
She files, we give you Gazette, so, they're gonna send her a bill anyway.
Yeah, we paid that.
She had the title.
Yeah.
There you go, map there, Charles.
So, I flagged it last month, for Tony. It's been disturbed, especially over in the southern area, and they're flagging four. So, we're talking about restoring that area, it's like 50 square feet of restoration in that corner where we're going to put a retaining, we're proposing to put a retaining wall. And, he'd also like to put the 18-inch stone wall. This, I was informed, is backwards, Zenith Consulting and Engineers. It needs to be reversed.
They're seeing the dwelling of this building.
Yeah, exactly. The septic system is going before the Board of Health, so this is preliminary for the septic system. We just wanted to get on the agenda and get the ball rolling because of the enforcement order, but, um, the septic system's being reviewed by the Board of Health at their meeting on August 28th. So, uh, Niles from Zenith is pretty sure it's gonna stay similar in grading and size and all, but he, you know, obviously, it's not the full design yet. He was waiting for a civil analysis, which he just got. So, for us, very small corner is within the 25-foot buffer of the BBW. This is an existing, you know, drive, if you wanna call it. He's agreed to leave it gravel and not pave it.
Now, uh, it says here, um, that there was a septic system there at one time?
From what the Board of Health understands, there's a, there's a letter that I submitted with your packet, that talks about the fact that this was used as a dwelling by farmhands, and there was a system. Apparently, there are pictures of some sort-
A bucket's not a system, though.
With the Board of Health?
A bucket's not a, I'm just saying, a bucket's not a system.
Not a system.
Uh, or a tree.
I have a question, why is there a break in the stone wall?
Why is there a break in the stone wall?
Because you want, you know, access to the back.
What?
Because you want access to the back.
To walk?
There's no access to the back, it's all wetland.
We'll put a straight wall right across.
The wetland base-
I just thought it would be a good idea someone to get into the back, without busting the stone wall, you know?
Well, given the track record that we, we have of this lot, if there's an opening day, you're gonna use it, and it may not be for the best interest of the conservation community.
Continue the wall, Frank, will you?
Because right now, the wall is in the wetland.
Yeah.
The last enforcement order we issued, it's on, it's right in the wetland.
Well, there is no wall there right now, but you mean the coil line?
He dug along the edge of the driveway, and, and the wetland as well, so... The, the wetland line would have been right on the opposite edge of your, of your wall. That probably issued the enforcement order, and, and I'm afraid if, if, that's a pretty wide opening. If it was a 10-inch, you know, to walk back and pick duck eggs, that wouldn't be bad, but that's enough room for a truck to get in, load a-
Charlie, put the wall straight ahead, if that's what you'd like, we'll put it straight across.
I mean, there's nothing back there to protect, it's all wetland.
Yeah.
The best protection would be, close it right off.
Okay, I would like to see hard evidence that there was a septic system, not, here say, not buckets, not, um, trees with holes in it, um, before-
Capillary problems, all of the documentation.
Well, okay, then, then I would like to get copies of it, and you can bring it for the next meeting.
Okay.
And again, hard evidence, not, not, uh-
We have pictures of it, we took pictures as we went along.
Okay, that's good, that's, we'll have a front record.
I had the Williams inspector come out and look at it, before we, you know, disturb it, so...
No, that's fine, but, you know, I'm just, uh-
And he would never issue a building, I don't believe, without evidence of the septic system being there.
And there is a letter in the packet, too, between, um, I have a copy of it.
You do have a file number now, too.
What?
They issued a file number today.
Yes.
Yes, it's, um, 017-0423.
What was the last three?
423.
423.
Yeah. I know when I submitted, um, the plans, uh-
Well, we're gonna continue if this, if you deliver that, um-
What are you looking for?
Yeah.
Hard evidence of a previous septic system.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a copy of the letter, but you have the letter. I put it in the bag, multiple copies.
But, a, a letter to me saying that someone saw someone shit in the woods is, no, no.
No, it was a letter, it was, it was the engineer with the Board of Health.
Okay, all right, okay.
To the Board of Health, correct? Yeah.
Is that the letter from Bob?
Yeah. Yeah, Bob Barrowby, right?
It's in, it's in your notice of intent.
Yes. Um, the motion controls are up, and he stopped work completely, so we were hoping you'd lift the enforcement order.
And put that with the, did you see it? Did you read it or what? Any questions for now? Any other, okay, our motion to continue to next month?
Motion to continue hearing to September eleventh? Motion to continue to September.
Um, in the meantime, but-
I'll second that.
Would you consider lifting the enforcement order or you want to keep it?
Well, we haven't issued a, a new-
What are you reading with the Board of Health?
August twenty-eighth, Wednesday, the twenty-eighth.
It's Wednesday?
No, the twenty-eighth.
For us, two weeks, two weeks. And we're meeting in-
Eleven?
Eleven, four weeks.
Well, you want to continue to a point before that, our next meeting? Is that what you're requesting?
No.
No, I was just asking if you'd consider if, um, is that finally, right? Lifting the enforcement order.
I don't want to do that until we get our notice of intent to give instructions. We have to, we have-
All right.
What?
I've joined that.
You know, because if we do it, lift the enforcement order without instructions on what to do as far as this, this wall and, and remember that's going to be a gravel, we have no idea what's going to happen. It's like-
Copy.
And if it makes a difference with the Board of Health, I mean, we, we can issue a letter stating that pending their decision, we're going to, we will consider this proposition.
We do have it, help.
Sounds good.
Okay, we rescind them all. There's three or four of them. We can pile them all in one rescind, rescission and that, that'll be good, hopefully.
I only saw one, but yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, so, um-
Well, he hired me to try to keep him on track, so I think he's headed in the right direction.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, continue to the, the eleventh and enforcement order remains in effect. Okay, now, was there another enforcement order that we were going to deal with tonight?
Uh, well, we issued one for the, the footing that he put in, that was the latest one. The one before that was a stone wall and there were two others before that. I, one goes back to two thousand eighteen.
Brook Street? Brook Street?
No, for this one.
No, 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 I meant, was there another?
Three or maybe four enforcement orders.
You're breaking records. You're, you're like the Red Sox, breaking records.
Losing streaks.
Losing streaks and, and number of strikeouts, number of strikeouts within so many innings.
Can I get on the agenda for next month for Brook Street?
That was all unnecessary.
Well, if you do your filing, yeah.
I've already started, you know, if you feel like you're ready for next, you know, for the ROI for Brook Street, pending the variants, if you're looking for, that's going to be there next week. Looking for a variant.
Well, when it's, when it's submitted, uh-
I just left it on the agenda.
But right, right now, you're under an enforcement order for that, too.
You'll, you'll be on the agenda for the enforcement order anyway. And then Brandon will have to represent you for the, perhaps, yeah.
I'll just say Brook Street for the next-
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on then. We have-
Thank you. Nice to meet you all.
Lisa, you're not, you're not running right away yet, are you?
I don't have to.
Okay, just, just, we're not-
It doesn't look like a very big, you know-
No, no, it doesn't. We just got a couple of things here. Uh, okay, review invoice for, um, Nova Armstrong?
Uh, yes. I've got the, uh, the invoice here.
Do you want to make a motion to, uh, to pay that amount to Nova Armstrong?
I make a motion to pay Nova Armstrong an amount of twenty-two hundred and eighty-two dollars.
No, 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 twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-two hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-two cents.
Actually, there was a second.
I'll find out.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
How many of these do you need to be signed?
Both the Hill and the, uh-
That was a motion made by Jim, seconded by Jack. Are you, okay, are you both there?
Jack did that, okay. I just wanted to get it right so I don't have to correct the minutes next.
There you go. Okay, certificate of, of compliance request? Okay, could you, um-
Yep.
Go ahead.
All they did was test holes around the three poles.
Okay, um-
Certificate's there, ready, put aside.
All right, we need a, a motion to issue a certificate of compliance to, um, let's see. Project manager, who was it that actually, uh?
BSC Group.
The BSC, yeah, BSC Group?
I make a motion to issue the certificate, certificate of compliance for BSC Group, the National Grid.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It'll go that way next.
Yeah.
Lisa, oh, God. About five years ago, American Chestnut Foundation, we got them, I got them to come in and we got some hybrid American chestnuts. Uh, one, two croaked out here.
Yeah.
And I took one from the back forest, because we had a hundred and fifty planted back there. They call them mutt nuts. And I, I looked and I found what I thought was a pretty good one and replaced one of the dead ones. And that's kind of making, making a stand, but we lost an eight-foot tree, just went like that. And its roots ascending up, but that's probably going to die, too. But I'm going to try to cultivate it a little bit so that when the others bloom, maybe it'll get some crossbreeding. I got one tree out here, I saw the first nut. One nut, it's about five years old. I'm going to have to get out there and stain God from the squirrels because I don't know, I don't know where the pollination came from. But I would, I would love to see a lot of nuts. And then we have Town Forest on Chestnut Street. So my goal is eventually to put them on Chestnut Street and also-
We can put something down on the corner for Williams and Main Street.
Yeah, that's right. Williamson, and he's always there, he, he could check them and-
He could check them, he could check them.
His soil's going to probably be different from Chestnut.
They don't ruin wetland.
No, I know. No, they don't ruin wetlands. But, uh, if I, if, if there's enough, uh, if, if next year, if I can get enough of them, that's what I would like to do. Maybe have Bristol Aggie start them and then, that's where, that's where we got the mutt nuts through Bristol Aggie from the Chestnut Foundation. But most of those are dead, most are.
Yeah, should put a thing of like thirty years maybe tops?
No, these things will live a couple of hundred years. They'll go a hundred twenty-five feet high. The Ameri, the true American will go a hundred twenty-five feet high.
They used to live a hundred and twenty years.
Yeah, but now they're blood.
No.
Now I don't think they, remember the person, Kimberly, he had a whole bunch of them to east, you know?
Hoss Chestnut, you and I remember Hoss Chestnut, not, not American. Charlie, that one tree over here that died from the, uh, blight, um, it sent up shoots.
Yep.
Can I put something on it to try to keep it alive long enough so I can get some pollen from it to pollinate, uh, these others that are, that are, that are here that it might not be as pure?
You want to get, put a piece of cloth over it?
No, but I mean, what, what is it that kills the chestnuts?
The blight.
Yeah, but what is the blight? Is it a fungus? It is a-
Yes.
A fungus, yes. So a fungicide would do it?
Well, if they had a fungicide that worked, they would have, well, it was so many years ago, they, they didn't have fungicides.
How about calthane?
I have no idea.
Calthane.
It's a fungicide. Whether it will help or not, I have no-
I know, I get some calthane.
You'd have to find out when the fungus is active.
I, I got, I got it from, um, from, from some, a tree place around here, that used to be around here.
Used to be, it was going to stay in our box because we can't anymore, so.
The deer don't want a lot in.
Oh, everything will want the chestnuts, everything. But hopefully, we don't have deer out here in the, in town hall.
Okay, you do.
Squirrels, squirrels will, I, so as soon as it turns-
I lived in, in the city, not in the city, Boston, and I had deer on my property.
Well, squirrels up there, too.
Not many squirrels.
Different, different areas.
The foxes would take in care of squirrels.
I deliver, I deliver over in Dorchester and there's a ton of squirrels over there. Right off of Boston Road.
Yeah.
Okay.
Real city, not from marginal state.
Are we all set then? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I think we're, we're done, yeah.
I think a motion adjourned at the thirteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're done.
When is your next meeting, four o'clock?
The eleventh.